I want to welcome everyone to City Hall here in Scottsboro, Alabama. I'm Milton Carr and I'm the mayor and it's a great honor for us today to have Senator Jeff Sessions here with us. Someone else is going to introduce him, but I would like to say a couple of things that we appreciate him coming and spending time with us here in Scottsboro. We go to Washington a couple of times a year, a group of us. He's always very gracious with his time and meeting with us in his office and he's spending some quality one-on-one time with us at dinner. So Senator, we really appreciate what you do for Alabama and the representation. So now I want to introduce, I do want to introduce our legislative delegation. There are a lot of elected officials here, but Representative Tommy Haines is here and Representative Richard Wharton, and they're all fresh off their appearance at the special session in Montgomery. So welcome to the podium. Steve Livingston will now interview Senator Sessions.
Thank you, Mayor. If one thing you didn't have to do there, you didn't have to mention a special session. We will get to go back and finish that at some point in time into the future. It is my privilege to introduce Senator Jeff Sessions. He really needs no introduction as he comes to Jackson County, quite regularly and has met with us on a very regular basis. He has been serving in the United States Senate for the last 18 years. He's served in two Senate subcommittees, Strategic Forces of the Armed Services Committee and Immigration and National Interest on Judiciary Committee. As y'all well know, he is foremost a fighter for immigration control in the United States Senate. He is a senior member of the Senate Budget Committee where he leads efforts to restore the federal government to its profitable, we just had a little short conversation about printing money back there. So appreciate that. We'd like to welcome Senator Jeff Sessions to Scottsboro and Jackson County. He and his wife married, have three married children and nine grandchildren. So welcome.
... areas of the state, there's no doubt about it. Actually, we've got a difference in South Alabama and this area in temperatures and it's all in all for August, I've had the worst day of the month. We made 20 stops around 18 so far, a couple more today and end up with 20 stops around Alabama this week, which has been encouraging. We've got a lot of good things going on. We've had town halls and met with schools and done a number of things. In our business meetings and good companies, a lot of homegrown companies in Alabama that are now internationally operating there and it makes you feel good. Doctor one businessman, he was drunk and he said, "Well, yeah, I get so frustrated." He said, "I did hire three people yesterday, a few weeks ago, and two I'm doing real good." He said, "Not all bad." I said, "No, not all bad." That's our plan to be with you. Things are not going sufficiently well in Washington. So I'm not an apologist for what's going on. I believe your leaders can do a better job of serving the public interest and I say so, which doesn't always make people happy, but I just am at the point that you give me the honor of representing you. You don't want to be what that lawyer said, a potty plant. You're there to stir up, fight for what you believe in and what people believe in and I appreciate the honor that you really deserve. Really appreciate it. The election last year when I didn't have an opponent, that was really good. I worry about, you know, Steve and y'all, House members, they're wrestling with really, really tough issues in Montgomery. You don't want to raise taxes or you don't want to do for-prove things you don't believe in for the state and you don't want to damage the state financially by not having what you have to have. Generally, it seems like after these crises and people are, you know, they shred their clothes and put ashes and sackcloth on and weep on the Capitol steps, but the next year states and towns and cities are still running. Most people don't know the difference. So I don't want to, so sometimes going through a lean process helps you become a government, become leaner and more productive. So I hope that that can be one of the outcomes. That's already, already made the government, the government leaner and more efficient. We are not doing that in Washington. We really are not. And it's so massive. The government's so big and it's so hard to manage and it's so complex. Like I met with doctors this morning in hospitals, basically the hospital association, Boaz, and we were, and they're repeating to us what we've heard. One of the hospital administrators said the last five people he hired was to do paperwork. They were all saying they had to hire lawyers to defend their fees because they have to code everything according to this new system, the electronic medical records that everybody says if they'll save money, they say is not saving money. That nurses are spending less time in the room with patients and more making sure that the paperwork's accurate. They've got people on staff, clinical people, that spend full time making sure that everything that gets coded is properly coded because if not, they've got headhunters out there, people on a collection percentage basis who come in and inspect the hospitals and if something is coded wrong, they deny even though the patient got the treatment that he was supposed to get. Got his leg fixed or his knee replaced or, you know, gallbladder removed. It goes on. They say, "Well, you didn't fill out the paperwork right, you don't get paid." And it's big. I was shocked how much. So this is the kind of thing that happens to me. I mean, it just, it just points out a deep philosophy that I think most Americans share. We need a limited government in Washington. That's a constitutional history we started with. We don't need to get to the idea that Washington can impose its values down to the lowest level of America if not capable of, if not capable of. So we, Anderson Sarr said, talking about immigration or something to that effect, and I was railing about it. So maybe I just railed over that. Obviously, the chosen, that isolate. Right. So it's great to be with you. We are going to see another, I'm afraid, almost certain conglomerational disaster at the end of this fiscal year, which is September 30th. Our appropriations committee in the Senate, I got to give them credit, for the first time in at least six years, they passed out a committee to the floor of the Senate, all 12 appropriations bills. Almost all of the bills had bipartisan Democratic Republican vote. I think a couple of them are unanimous, maybe one or two were on the party line vote. And they're on the floor for it to be called out, proceeded to, amended, and passed or rejected. Well, the Democrats, you have to devote the proceeding to the bill and you can filibuster a vote to proceed to the bill and they're filibustering the proceeding to any of the bills, even though their members voted for them in committee. And the reason is we have to spend more on defense than the vote is allowed and they're demanding that we spend an equal amount of increase on non-defense spending. But I liken that to a guy who's in debt, a treaty filed on his house and he has to fix the roof and borrow more money to fix the roof and you don't then have the children come in and say, "Daddy, you spent more on the roof, so we want a new plasma TV. We want to spend just as much on a vacation." I mean, this is, how much logic is that? I mean, I wish we didn't have to spend more on defense, but I think we do and the Democrats agree and so does the President at this level of spending he thinks is appropriate. So there's not a disagreement on that. It's a question of do we violate the budget that we agreed to in 2011 for the non-defense accounts? And he calls for us to stay flat spending again this year on non-defense spending, especially spending. And then the next year it increases at two and a half percent a year. So wouldn't Alabama like to increase spending two and a half percent a year for the next seven or eight years? So I just say to you that. I'm worried about the common sense. They, they are fucked. So what else is happening? I'm worried about that. So we're going to end up, and the Democrats, Harry Reid and Chuck Schumer and myself, Patty Murray, they're saying, "Just like we predicted, the Republicans are shutting the government down." They want to shut the government down. Now, how could that possibly be? We passed all 12 bills that would fund the entire government of the United States. We got the majority. It just doesn't spend as much as they like to spend and they are filibustering all the bills, even the defense bill, and accuse us of shutting the government down. So that's pretty weird. And if our people, our leadership can't turn the tables on that, that'll be disappointing. They better get busy talking about it and explaining some of the things that are happening because it's going to end up at the end and it's going to be too late. We get to September 25th and 26th and the government hasn't been funded. You know, if Congress doesn't appropriate the money, the President cannot spend money. That's one power Congress has.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I apologize. Did the President know that?
Well, he tried to. Yes, he knows. There are amazingly some weaknesses in that that allow emergency things to continue and stuff like that, but fundamentally, under the appropriation power of Congress, you can't do that. And I have to say to you that the fastest growing items is Medicare and Social Security and they're growing at a really strong rate and they're, you take that plus interest on the debt and that amounts to 60% of our spending. So when you hear people say, "We've got to deal with the title," that is true. We need to put the Social Security on a sound basis, look the American people in the eye and say, "If we fix this, you will get your checks." We are going to fix Medicare and make it a sound program and serve your insurance interests and that's possible, but if we don't do that, we're going to have a problem. Yes, ma'am?
I know they're discussing the Medicare issue right now and changing it. Is that going to affect current Medicare or do Medicare?
Well, they've been talking about Medicare for a long time, but I don't see any prospects in the next couple of years unless there's a new President that leads an effort to make any big change in Medicare. They did cut Medicare. What the President Obama did is move, he cut providers. He cut hospitals and doctors, laboratories, spending. They said, "Well, we didn't cut Medicare, we just cut the people who provide the services." And then they said, they assumed that would save $500 million and they said, "Now we can spend that $500 on Obamacare." That's how they funded Obamacare. Biggest chunk I came out of Social Security too, in the same fashion. So, but you can't keep cutting providers, hospitals and doctors and expect as years go by, the same quality of care you would have got and then better compensated. So you raise a good point. I don't think we'll see a short fix of Social Security or Medicare in the short term in the next three years.
I think I'll be done with it.
Well, we're going to have that on our Social Security. We just got to figure out a way to handle it. But the disability portion of Social Security is running out of money this year and the administration says, "Well, that's easy. We'll just do like we did before. We'll take the money from Social Security." So that's going to put Social Security on a more unsound path than it already is. Also, you've heard them say that if we legalize illegal aliens and give them Social Security benefits, which the President, done by executive order, which has supported, blocked at least some of it, that that's going to strengthen Social Security. Let's be really honest and this is the true fact. Everybody, most of the illegal people in the country today are low-income workers. They'll be paying at the lower end of Social Security payments and benefits and they'll draw out a lot more than they ever pay in. But because most of them are 30, 40, maybe low 50s, 20 years of age, they'll pay in for a while before they draw out. So they take the first 10 years of legalization program and say that it creates more money for Social Security. But all you've got to do is that every worker at that level of income over their lifetime will draw out much more than they ever paid in the Social Security. It just makes Social Security more unstable, more difficult to save than if we hadn't had it. Let's tell them, that's the indisputable fact to me. The President and the promoters of the Gang of Eight Bill all say it's going to strengthen Social Security. Not true. You stayed in appearance of it in the short term. That was one of my social spots. That's a lot of money. What else is going on? Y'all got any questions? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. You mentioned how to go to the hospitals if the program's not right and that they don't get paid. Well, they're held economy. The massive size of the federal government, all the departments, it would appear that most people who make mistakes in various capacities in the government agency, they're not held economy. All I hear is you can't hardly fire a federal employee. How can, can you not come up with a way to release a person who's in error or incompetent or politically, like the IRS possibly doing there, whatever it is with the tax reorganizations that they, for the political thing? But nobody's ever held economy. All we do is have Senate meetings and people are put on the show, but there's no results from them.
I think that is a big issue and basically what you're saying, we have created this monument of bureaucracy, this like this John Amoeba or something that rolls over everything and nothing ever gets stops. It just keeps on going and the people are trying to hold it back. This is what the hospitals told us this morning. The law says that they should be able to have an appeal heard when they protest the cuts that they receive within 90 days. We're running as much as three years. They said, "But if I code by mistake, somebody hits the wrong doc on the computer, you deny me my money immediately, but you don't fall off and at least I delivered, you know, the patient, the healthcare that he got." Why do you think this is, this government is getting it? Now, on that specific question, I was United States Attorney for 12 years and we had a good staff, but I can tell you it is very hard to dismiss a federal employee. One of the stories I'll never forget, and I agree to prosecute a lot of postal crimes, postal workers, and some of them are very small crimes. And I said, "Why don't y'all just fire them?" And they said, "We can't fire them." I said, "What do you mean?" They said, "Well, we fired this one for this and this one for that." And they read and stated them, they have the protest hearings and all these personnel things and unless they're convicted of a crime. So I prosecuted them for stealing something out of the mail or stuff of a small amount. I felt like that somebody, a postal person who stole from the mail ought not to keep their job. That is an example of the difficulties in the government in managing this payroll and this employment system. What else is there? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I have a question. It's really on that, but I just want to speak up a little bit for all veterans. I kind of wrote some stuff down here. I don't know how many folks in here know that they passed it, when Congress passed a care bill that's supposed to help the veterans get healthcare sooner without waiting until the end of the block, see, that's what I'm talking about, which is the VA system, they've only fired one person, okay? And it is, in the VA system, before I say anything else, the VA system locally, I go to Gunnersville VA, it's the most fantastic healthcare I ever had in my life. I mean, they got great doctors.
I love Gunnersville, it's great.
Okay, but when you leave Gunnersville, that's where the problem begins. In the bill, in the care program, anything over 40 miles, you're supposed to be able to go to a, to get approval to go to a local physician or local hospital, okay? Well, they've been pushing that. I think they finally got some of that straightened out. They were going by air miles, not by road miles. And the problem is, when you leave, when you go to Gunnersville and you have to go for a, I'm using myself as a thing, you have to go for an MRI, okay? I was five months getting an MRI, okay? Finally, I got approved for the care system, but in the 40-mile limit, okay, there's something wrong with that system because it's broke. If I, if I can go to a civilian doctor, if I live 40 miles from a VA clinic, okay, why do I have to drive 120 miles to Birmingham to go to get my test or whatever done, okay? Now, in that, when that test, I'm trying to explain this so everybody understands this system, but, okay, when you finally get the care card, nobody knew what to do, okay? Anyhow, I ended up going to Decad Medical Center for an MRI that was still never approved from Birmingham, okay? But I had, I like to thank you because I wrote your office, but by the time I got your answer, that I had gotten what I needed, okay? So I didn't want to bother you anymore with that, but to be flat out honest with you, I want to tell you how the system works. If I have to have a test done and I got to send it to Birmingham, okay? Birmingham has 30 days to make it, you know, get me in according to the new law, okay? But they will wait 30 days and then they'll say, you know, they'll get you an appointment or they'll put you on the care program, which is, you know, there was no reason that, being that we are, you know, most of the people in this area are over the 40-mile limit that we even have to deal with Birmingham other than getting a referral to a local doctor, okay? So, and I was told, I'm just telling you that the system was great, that you passed it to VA, is not, they are not using it because, and I was told this, and I'm not going to tell you, I'm not going to reveal the person's name. The VA right now is afraid of themselves losing their jobs because of the outpatient, outsourcing, okay? So they're going to run you down this long road, long road, hoping they can get you in. 30 days later, you still haven't got an answer and there was really no reason for that because according to the 40 mile, we should be.
To be automated.
We should be automatically picked up and gone to a civilian doctor or put in for a civilian doctor. That does not happen, okay? And it's a great, I mean, the VA is approved, you know, and everybody, well, I'm just telling you, that's the problem, okay? But everybody says to me, you know, a couple of months ago, six, seven months ago, the whole world, the whole country said, "Wow, what's wrong with the VA system? What's broke? We have to wait 30 days." It's been like that forever. Because when I sell somebody, I go to the VA for my healthcare. What do you go there for? There are a bunch of butchers. That's the answer you get. So I've been getting that answer forever, you know? So this thing that happened, oh, it just, it just happened, you know, just didn't happen, you know, we didn't, they wasn't getting the care. That was a joke. That's not been happening for years and years and years. But again, under the VA system now, it is getting better, but they're not using the system that Congress passed to help the veterans. They're not using it, okay?
Thank you. I've been hearing that. Matter of fact, we discussed it in the Republican conference a couple of weeks ago, Johnny Isaacson, Georgia's leading an effort to manage. He was saying that they'd met the high officials of the VA and they had actively asked and said they got to do better and make some changes they've been resisting making, I think for the reasons you said. So you create a VA infrastructure, doctors and hospitals and clinics and all those things. Then I, the question I ask is, well, if you allow a lot of people to move out of that and not be, go to those clinics, then they don't have as many patients and they need to draw down, you know, how much the VA's been getting and have more money available to pay the private physicians who does your treatment. And right now, I think VA's trying to get value both. They're seeing a reduction of their payoffs, but they don't want to reduce any of the money or organize or improve the efficiency of their system.
Because they don't want the money to go off their.
Congress's idea, what we wanted to see is to transition to more of a situation where an individual, if they live far away from a VA facility, they can go to their own doctor. And I think that makes sense, you know? I believe we should head in that direction. If the veterans are happy, they get to go see the guy that goes church with them every day, they know him, they go to school with him or something, high school, play football with him, they want to go see that doctor. What's wrong with that? And it ought to be, when you add up the total cost, the VA should be less expensive.
It should be a lot less expensive.
Tom Coburn, Dr. Tom Coburn, he's got cancer now and frantically Tom is taking treatments, but he didn't run again. His doctor, he says the VA doctors are doing about 30% of the patients, 40% of the young which the private physicians sees every day. So he's hot about it. He's hot about it. So it's just management. The system begins to serve itself and serves the patients. If a doctor here doesn't serve his patients, people quit going, he doesn't have enough money to pay his patients. So I think we don't have that self-correcting system for our government agenda. But thank you. I want to kind of look at, Lisa is in Huntsville. Stand up, Lisa. Lisa is, I feel represented for this area. She and her team, if you've got a call about a VA matter or something else, you can call us. They've been, she's been at this a number of years. We at least know who to call and how to push some buttons for VA, Social Security, Medicare problems you may have. We work for you, so don't hesitate to give us a call.
So to be honest with you, I'll tell you how I finally got on the care system and I don't, I've never done this in my life. Finally, I got so fed up after three months that I called the VA and I've run around and run around. Finally, I got somebody to listen and I said, "If I don't get an answer for something, I will go to the news media and I will tell one story and we can start this VA stuff all over again." Within two days, I had an appointment. Well, I had an appointment, needless to say, it took another three months, but that was what I had to say to even get them to look at it. They are afraid of the media, but it's still self-preservation on your part.
Well, we hope that we would be further along now. I think we should have, we had the promises of major restructuring and reform and those are promises from the VA have not been given. Well, thank you for letting me serve you. I mentioned to you the concern I have about the end of the year. Several people have been asking me, "What's the plan? Why y'all elect having 17 people running for president?" And I said, "Who's y'all? I mean, just go tell somebody that came running for president." So it's an interesting primary out there. I hope you'll keep active, watch on it and identify people that you like. I think we need a candidate who's honest, who's going to manage this government. I thought Romney would have done that, but we've got to manage it every day, just like you said. Every department, every agency needs to perform at a high level, just like private business has to perform at a high level. I think, I think we need to maintain and affirm the many ways we service every year in the military and be strong, although we've got to demand our allies put up more of the share of the cost. and be strong, although we got to mend our allies, put up more of the share of the cost. If that young tire, them riding expecting whatever, the Russian bear, they say, oh, come and help us. So I asked one of our European allies from all countries, they're good people, and they really don't like the Russians. Saying, well, you're spending two percent of your GDP on defense, and we're spending three point eight. You must not be so scared. You're scared you'd be spending more, same like me. You need to step it up. So I, I think that's true. We need a lawful system of immigration. This illegality has got to end. It needs to serve our interests. Most Americans don't know, but we're at the, virtually the highest point of immigrant persons in the United States in the history of the American republic. It's grown steadily, it's increasing, and you throw illegal on top of it, and it really creates a kind of situation where we're not assimilating people into the American experience effectively. The numbers are large enough in the mountains, without a doubt. The wages are being depressed, the job prospects are being depressed. And we got to be careful about that. Our trading policies, I believe, have got to be tougher, and negotiations have got to be tougher. China, you sign an agreement with China, and something happens, and what do they do? They devalue the yuan two percent. That's huge. That gives them a substantial, you know, a trading advantage over the United States. And so they, they're worried about not having jobs in China, and so they devalue the yuan, which allows them to export more, hire more people in China, and in effect, export their unemployment to the United States. As one economist told me, when you devalue your currency, what you're doing is exporting your unemployment to somebody else. And we need to get our people working. We have the lowest percentage of Americans in the working ages actually working today since nineteen seventies. This five percent of three percent wage level is not the picture, the accurate picture. They also count part-time workers in that number. We got more part-time. And so we just got to be, we need, we need to strengthen our economy and need to protect our workers and our manufacturing and our jobs. And we really do need to reform the tax code and make it serve, facilitate growth more. I don't know if we can reduce taxes. But we darn sure need to have a tax system that's more conducive to growth and investment in America. I know we can, we can do that. So there's just a lot of things, regulatory burden on the American economy is excessive. Bankers tell me about Dodd-Frank, and they sound just like the hospital administrations, talking about hospitals. And then you've got all the regulatory anti-energy rules that are out there, and I'm afraid we're going to feel from TBA and all, I guess, the impact of reduced coal-generated electricity. Right now, doesn't appear to make a lot of difference. When somebody told us in a previous meeting, natural gas prices begin to return to something close to the normal levels, that's going to double easily. And we could find ourselves dependent on one source of energy, but we need them competing against each other. Coal historically has been at far the lowest level. So they're just mandating all this stuff without really analyzing it, sucks wealth out of everybody's pocket, makes a business more expensive to operate, more difficult to export. And that's some of the concerns. I think we need to assist our presidential candidates on talking about those and at least understanding it and saying, they're going to protect us. Somebody needs to, we need to be sure they're committed to protection of the American people first. The conservative national view said, we are a nation with an economy, not an economy with a nation. And we got people who go to wars and put their lives on the line for us, and their livelihoods need to be consumed, not just some vague theoretical idea about the economy. And I think it plays out in real work. Really excited, mayor, about Google. That's a good announcement, and it has a potential for further benefits in the future. And it's a good reflection of anybody who wants to search around the nation for a good place to invest, hire good people, and have a good lifestyle and a good place to go. Why wouldn't they come here? Would you say, I mean, what better place than to identify than this area? If we get this economy growing, businesses start expanding, we're going to see more of it, and this area is going to be more of it. Do I have a question?
Thank you, Senator. Don't wait so long to come back and see us.
I'm trying.
Hey, and you're right, sir. In North Alabama, it's a lot cooler up here than it is down in Lower Alabama.
You're right. It's best, it's not cool, but it's not as hot.
But, sir, it's what I'd like to ask you a question about. Some folks feel that, that Congress receives an inordinate amount of corporate contributions. And not just senate, but Congress and all over. Would you support a constitutional amendment to overturn Citizens United?
No, I don't do that. Actually, the reason you would need a constitutional amendment to do that would be to amend the First Amendment. And the First Amendment allows people to speak, and I don't know how to, I get frustrated about the law. I actually think sometimes it does influence people adversely. And I've said this once, my line is, votes trump money. You can have your money, a lot of rich people have gone down in flames, you better be talking to the people, actually going to vote. The voters do need to pay attention and make sure the politicians are serving their interest, not instead of some corporate Wall Street interest. But I, I think it's a very dangerous thing for politicians to say, somebody out of office can spend his money or her money to attack, ring for being a sorry public servant. I don't have them do it, but it's, so that's how the issue came down, I think. Fundamentally, could you deny people the right to go on television and express a view? Isn't that protected by the First Amendment, free speech? And that's where the Supreme Court came down. I think it's, people frustrated with it. And one of my buddies, my barber, Curtis and Clinton, and Clinton said, Curtis doesn't like them negative ads. But I do. I want to know what they've done. Sometimes you do find out what they've done, and sometimes it's not so good. Make it over, Paul, but generally, we all get tired.
So then you would support campaign contribution reform then?
Yeah, we'll see what could be, how the system could be improved, and I guess it does need to be carefully stated in light of Citizens United and Supreme Court decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get another question?
Okay, here.
I think you have a question, did you?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. My question is, there seems to be, the Medicare and Medicaid and all, and social security seems to be under attack. What my concern is, is when it comes to tactics, when it comes to those who can allow deductions on second homes, on boats, on personal RVs, et cetera, et cetera, that allow these deductions, why do they allow that? Because one, one home's enough. But with all these other things that people are getting deductions on, I think you're missing a very large structure of tactics that has been missing in our tax system.
It is a complex system, and there are problems. And it needs to be simplified. I think you could make an argument, you don't need to deduct interest on two homes. The amounts of tax increase, but it's there. But friends, I've been, I've been on the budget committee, I'm telling you, social security and Medicare are growing by six percent a year. Inflation is in two percent. They are an unsound path. We've got an eighteen trillion dollar deficit. If you eliminated the entire Defense Department, you wouldn't balance the budget. The defense and non-defense discretionary spending, which excludes social security, Medicare, Medicaid, certain retirement benefits and interest on debt, is about sixty percent of all we spend. And so you asked about Medicare. To me, the social security is a trust fund. You've played into it all your life, you have a promise of benefits, and we need to figure out a way to find that. Medicare Part A is a trust fund. You pay on your paycheck. Every time you get a paycheck, Medicare goes into this Medicare fund, and that's something entitled to. But there are other parts of it that are just paid on the general revenue. And so it can't be that we can never review that if we don't have the money to pay for it. And so if you've got a retiree whose house is paid for, whose children are educated, and got an eighty thousand dollar a year income, why should there be drugs being paid for when a young family making fifty thousand with four kids and a house payment has to pay for his own mess? So there's some, there's some things out there, and that's not in the trust fund part. Prescription drugs. So there's some other parts of social, so I think you could, you could, sir, we just can't afford to do all of those things. We have to, if you've got the money, you can pay your own prescription drugs, you should pay for them. If you're low income, we're going to pay for it. And if you don't, so I do agree, all I'm telling you is, let's be frank, I do agree you cannot balance the budget on the VA. But you can eliminate VA. You wouldn't, what's a hundred and something billion a year in the deficit? According to the Congressional Budget Office, would be eight hundred billion dollars. No, no, interest on the debt would be eight hundred billion dollars in ten years. Highway bill's fifty billion. I'm talking about interest on the debt annually being projected to be eight hundred billion. It's so, the interest rates are low now, so that's why we're down about two fifty or three hundred billion dollars a year interest payment. So I'm just telling you, we're on a long path financially. We've been on it a long time, and we are going to have to all participate in a belt-tightening process, and it can't all be done by just raising taxes. So on that head, you know, thank you for being here. Thank you for your friendship, and God bless you for living in one of the great places in the world and in one of the great towns in the world. For that, we should all be thankful. Thank you. Mel's been a great friend and great leader here, and there are always groups are coming up and helping us be informed. Our whole delegation, Mo Brooks and all of them, you keep us alert all the time. I really do appreciate. We don't have many places in the state that, and Max, the good advice and leadership he gives. Thank you all.
Thank you.